All right, you're ready to come out of closed session. Tom?
Thank you, the City Council met in closed session with respect to both of the items on the closed session agenda. With respect to item number one, there is no reportable action. And with respect to item number two, the City Council gave instruction to its real property negotiator regarding price and terms of payment, and there is no other reportable action. And that concludes the report.
Come out of closed session, we'll go into a regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Moore, here. Councilman Nick.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Mayor Potem Swanson.
Here.
Mayor Benoit.
Here. Alfred Garcia, would you lead us in the flag squad?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, there we go. We have a few presentations today. First off, Isabella, are you here? Isabella, who won the Ben Carson Scholarship at Elsinore High School? No, okay. We'll get that over to her. Yes. All right, I have two Eagle Scouts today. Clyde, come on down. So Clyde Watson. May you win, sir. So Clyde, whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is attained by only a few elite of all young men in the Boy Scouts of America program, and many famous people and leaders in our country have attained the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Clyde Riker Watson, I get all that right? All right, good. Has worked very hard towards achieving the pinnacle in scouting, the Eagle Scout rank, and whereas for his Eagle Scout project, he completed the fence project for the preschool and church at Mountain View Church in Willemar. Awesome. And whereas completing his project, Clyde has made a much appreciated contribution to the community. So here we report, be proclaimed that the City Council and the City of Willemar does hereby extend a hearty congratulations to Clyde Riker Watson on attending the Eagle Scout rank, and commends him for his dedication to his community and to the Boy Scouts. Congratulations.
So I've been working on the project for about almost a year. I started about, I started working about early last year, and it took a while to decide what I wanted to do, but then I realized that I want to do something for the church that allows my troop to meet every Tuesday. So I talked to the pastor and my scoutmaster to see what needed to be done at the church to possibly help out. And then they said they needed a fence around the cliffside because the elderly and the children like to play around the edge, so they need something to prevent them from getting too close and possibly falling down and hurting themselves. So then I started working on my project, started fundraising, gained donations for it, and it took a three-week end process to complete it, to the end, and I'm very proud of it.
Awesome. We have a wonderful, beautiful staff person here from Melissa's office. She also has a certificate for you.
Mine's not as beautifully wrote as your guys' but nonetheless, I'd just like to congratulate you on behalf of Assemblywoman Melendez on that project I had not heard about before. I'm glad that you were able to do public safety and help your community. So therefore, you're a certificate of merit on behalf of Assemblywoman Melendez in the 67th District.
Stand right up in front, we'll go to the councilman. Your mom and dad, you can come down here and get a photo for one. Thank you. All right. All right, there we go. Another Boy Scout. Now this is for Morgan Donovan. Come on down. Now Morgan, I saw you walking through the parking lot. Can you explain what happened to your sash here? Is it the whole way around too?
Yeah.
Oh my goodness. How many is that?
A hundred and thirty-ish.
Wow. Four more even done? I almost think the Eagle Scout thing is, that's almost more impressive. I don't know, we'll see what he did here. So I'll skip a couple of paragraphs here, but Morgan Donovan, you worked very hard towards achieving the pinnacle in scouting and Eagle Scout rank, and whereas your Eagle Scout project you installed at David Arthur Memorial Planter at the Willemar VFW. Awesome. I go there every once in a while, it's a beautiful place. In fact, I was there for Melissa's event, was that yesterday? I keep track of the days here. And whereas completing the project, Morgan has made a much appreciated contribution to the community, and now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council and the City of Willemar, California hereby extend a hearty congratulations to you, Morgan Donovan, in attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Congratulations.
So basically, my project was at the VFW, as all you guys know. Beforehand, the planter had a lot of dirt in it, there was a lot of weeds, it didn't look so nice. And I kind of figured, once I got the idea project from the representative from our troop, I was like, you know, that's a great idea. So I came up with all these blueprints and stuff. Took a while to get the whole process together, it took about a year and a half, and then I started to really get on it, especially because I'm almost 18.
You're being encouraging right out here.
So basically, I landscaped the whole gravel, or not the gravel, the planter, made the dirt all leveled. We placed a weave cloth, and then we placed gravel above it. And then I placed two concrete slabs with two nice redwood benches on the top, and then we trimmed up the pine tree, so it looked a lot nicer. We also cleaned up a little bit of the graffiti on the light pole that is near the missile, if you guys have ever been there.
Awesome.
As we just said, I was there with the mayor last night, and I did see that plaque, and it was very beautiful. So I'd like to congratulate you on doing all of that, on behalf of Assemblywoman and the City Senate District, your certificate of merit.
All right, real quick, which one was the hardest?
One of the silver ones. These ones are called, they're required for Eagle Scout. I would say probably just a little community, you almost have to do like a mini Eagle Scout in a way.
What was your project for that?
It was a food donation. I had to collect, I forgot the name of the donation, it was like six years ago. But we collected like tons of food, and it was like for like a school lunch kind of thing. My whole garage was filled, I remember that. It just took a lot of paperwork.
Very good. Awesome.
So I've known both these boys for a long time. Riker, because that's what we called him, was Riker. I've known him since elementary school. And then later Morgan Mu, and then we'll be seeing also his brother Monte, who just also earned his Eagle rate just the other day. But I want to say congratulations. And then, so tonight you're receiving an ARPA proclamation, and also from Assemblywoman Melendez. I also ordered for Congressman Calver, and also Riverside County Supervisor Kevin Jeffries. So when those come in, we'll just let you know when they're here, and you can come pick them up. And then both boys are meeting with Senator Stone.
Terry, where are you?
She's hiding in the back. There she is.
Come on down. So we have our first retirement. So Terry's been with us in our county department now for five years? Four years? Three years? And come on over here. And we're sorry to see you go. We know we had a lot of time with you, and we know you've had some struggles health-wise, but we know you're going to enjoy your retirement regardless, and we're just happy that you're going to be able to do that. So let me read some of this here. Whereas after six years of the city incorporation, on August 18th, 2014, Ms. Terry Rhodes left the City of Highland and accepted the City of Willemar's offer to become the first full-time accounting manager and city employee. Whereas since that date of hire, she has been invaluable to the citizens, city council, and staff in always providing exemplary financial and accounting and payroll services for the city, and her dedication to Willemar. And whereas she has not only been the first accounting manager for Willemar, she also has become the great friend of the city, assisting when selecting music performers for many of the concerts in the park. And whereas Terry has decided to retire from public service effective this June 30th, and will also now become the city's first retiree. And therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Willemar, California, on behalf of the citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim our heartfelt gratitude and congratulations to Willemar's accounting manager, Ms. Terry Rhodes, for her service and friendship to the City of Willemar, and her wishes and her family the very best in the future endeavors. Want to tell us about some of those future endeavors and plans?
To spend a lot of time with my husband and grandchildren. And I also knit for charity. I knit for an organization called Lots of Love, and I make chemo caps for them, so I plan on doing that.
Awesome. Very good. There you go. We'll get a quick photo up here. All right, Council Communications. Bridget?
Should have had some pictures. Ben started bringing up the pictures, so. So I attended the Elsinore High School Scholarship Nights. The seniors, they probably handed out, if you added up everything for full rides and military, maybe a million dollars, it was pretty spectacular to watch all the students receive their scholarships. Next went to Valerie Source Chamber Event. So this gentleman is Keith Jared, and he owns Tap Snap, and he lives here. Keith lives in Willemar. And so these pictures, you can put the sponsors on there, this is what we're going to have at the birthday, and you put our sponsors, we can change it back around, do whatever. And for two hours, you use limited pictures, so people just take the pictures, and then it comes out, and then it can get text to you, and it'll tell you the hashtags to use. So I thought it was great. And the pictures print out seconds. This was at the ALS event that we had, and the City Health Fair. And that's Cameron, who's not in the room, but is he? Is Cameron here? Okay. Cameron doing the hula hoop contest. And then we also, same day as Relay for Life, that's our beloved Stan Smith. And then we had the memorial event at the cemetery. Thank you so much, Dustin, I was able to bring in the AMW band.
Third one.
Third one.
Third bringer got winged bad.
After cemetery event, so that's something that we will have every day on Memorial Day. Then, oh, and Dustin's mom made the wreath, it was very nice. Little Free Library, so this is Natalia, she lives in Winsong. This is our second free little library that we have in Willemar. The first one was at Jean's, and so we did the ribbon cutting for this one about two Saturday's ago. Then same day, 9-9 Jiu-Jitsu offered a free self-defense course for women, and so we left the Little Free Library, went straight over there and did self-defense for two hours, it was really empowering. And he wants to put on more. Then that same night, we have movie in the park, that's Maria Walker, with her grandchildren blowing the big bubbles. And Bruce, she did her park, her water fountain project at Martin O'Brien Park, and that was a gold award ceremony. And then this was our, not the way we wanted to end our weekend. Wanted to thank our police, it was a great response. That was actually our first incident like that in 10 years, well probably before Spiny Hood, but since we've been incidented. Sleep Squad, so Sleep Squad just opened up right next door to Robux in the Oak Clinton Peak, the new shopping center. They opened on a Saturday, and on Sunday, Cops for Kids, and that's Adam Fane, the owner of Sleep Squad. We went out off Cottonwood Canyon Road, I drove that road in my little IKEA, and delivered mattresses to a home that, for two children that needed mattresses. And he opened on Saturday, and on Sunday we were delivering mattresses. So really thankful. Tomorrow, we have Flag Day Ceremony at Martin O'Brien Park at 6:00 PM, please join us. And Neighborhood Watch. So Elsinore and Willemar have the same Neighborhood Watch Nights. Before, we were doing it separate, but now we're doing it together. And the next, I think it says July 24th, so everyone is welcome to attend. We don't have a flyer, but I just want to mention we do have the bell ringing, since George was up here. The Willemar Historical Society, what we do in the annual bell ringing on July 1st at 4:00 PM, and that is the bell, the reason we have the bell in our logo. The bell is from 1886, and everyone that attends can ring the bell that day. We'll be there like 4:00 to 5:30-ish. And then I just had various other meetings.
And who did you get to sponsor the bell ringing?
So I was, actually City had Jersey mics, and I looked over, and then our new Taco Bell has a big bell outside, and I was like, bell? Taco Bell should sponsor the bell ringing. So Taco Bell is bringing the Taco Bell truck, and providing free food. So I think we get a taco, and maybe like a little quesadilla and a churro, and it'd be like a little box. And then also, faith Bible churches bring you free ice cream. So you get free food or free ice cream if you come to the bell ringing on July 1st at 4:00.
Okay, I always forget what I did for other months. I don't write it down, I usually look at the dots in my calendar, and I still miss stuff. But what I know I did for sure is I went to the Memorial Day Event. That was a really good event. Solemn day, we had a good speaker, good message, it was nice to have the band there, and obviously the wreath was really pretty. I will say that anyway. After that, I had a meeting with a sign developer for a possible new sign here, and that was really it. And I'll remember something as soon as Ben starts talking.
I too would like to say what an awesome Memorial Day Ceremony we had, and the great speaker. He was really, really good, absolutely great. It was a nice ceremony. Dustin couldn't make it to Sycamore Academy. I got to go. Yeah, you got to go to Vegas, I went to Sycamore Academy. I had more fun than you did, believe me. I watched that school, yeah, I did. I watched that school from day one, opening a shopping center over here. 10 years open, about the same year that we became the city. Is this your first graduating eighth grade class that started kindergarten there?
Yeah, it is.
So it was really awesome, awesome to see these kids. They came from all different walks of life, from all different areas. Some of them will go to the same high school, some of them won't, so they'll be separating from some of their friends. A couple kids, the one that didn't have language when he started, and he speaks now. And it was awesome just to see those kids and the smiles on their face. They read every name, did a great job. And they all came up and got their diplomas, so I had a good time. Thank you, Dustin.
Tim?
Memorial Day was an awesome event. My son, the Marine, came home, so he was pretty proud to stand there, even though he was unshaven. Didn't want to get in trouble for that.
He was a little embarrassed, huh?
Yeah, he was embarrassed when he saw everybody else all dressed up. It was his weekend off, I mean, it was a good time. Attended the RCA, we've had a bunch of interesting things that happened in the RCA, some new land acquisitions even in Willemar area that they've been buying up to, for the fuzzy bunnies. We've got a lot of fuzzy bunnies around there. I was going to make pictures, but my son, my grandson, who was in that picture doing the bubbles with my wife and my daughter, he wouldn't let me use his crayons, so I didn't bring pictures. So sorry for the pictures. That's about it for me.
Well, you're speaking tomorrow, Tim.
Oh. Pictures to that?
Want to tell them where?
Yeah, Flag Day. That's Martin O'Brien. I know, I know. Everybody sent me emails already. Thank you. That's actually nice. I really enjoyed doing it even last year, so it's been fun.
Well, you guys got most of them, other than I went out to the League of Cities meeting out in the Coachella Valley, was at the Palm Springs earlier this month, or late last month. And other than that, I think I was at most of the other events that you've brought up already. But yeah, I think the biggest one was definitely that shooting on Sunday, which is tragic and sad family affair, and unfortunately played out right in front of one of our local businesses that they were on their way to.
The funeral's actually this Saturday, if anyone wants to attend.
All right, with that, we'll go into the approval of the agenda. Couple modifications I'd like to bring forward. One is I'd like to move the City Manager's Report up to right behind the approval of the agenda, so we can hear some stuff about the cameras. And then the other thing I'd like to bring up is a bill, and I tried to do this, I tried to get it to the staff before, but this was a late gotten amend of a bill, AB 1405. And it's a bill that will, I'll just give you a brief outline so you can hopefully go down and bring it forward, but basically it allows Caltrans to do digital display boards on the freeway, and then takes that right away from a lot of the local jurisdictions to do that. So if I get a forfeit, I'll explain that a little bit more. So I'll bring it onto the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, and where would you like to place it on the agenda?
I'll put that right behind Gary's comments. So motion and second? Any opposed? So moved. With that, we'll go into the City Manager's Report. Gary?
Thank you, here's a few updates for you. As you know, July 4th is coming up, and it'll be before our next council meeting, before we have an opportunity to speak with everybody. And the City Hall will be closed on Wednesday, July 4th, so come on down here. Enjoy the holiday and celebrate at the parks, it'll be a fun day. Got a few comments about the video system, the video streaming of some meetings that was approved by Council on February 14th. The funding was allocated of $60,000. Following that, we have a number of items that staff has to work through. And we went through the PICC process, getting that established, that completed in May 11th. So we're not going to go forward until, you know, those items were approved. The next phase is vendor selection, we're still wrapping up the RFP process, looking forward to making an award at the July 11th council meeting, and issuing contract documents on the 14th of July. Looking forward to whoever the vendor is to do the installation, the testing, the programming, and policies and procedure preparation during the August timeframe, with a go-live date of September 12th, 2018. So that's our plan, I communicated that to you on the 25th of May, along with several residents who had inquired about that. And looking forward to that project coming online.
Those are the City Manager's Report items, that was it?
Yeah, then the closure.
All right, so again, AB 1405, this would allow Caltrans to erect digital billboard signs in the right-of-way, and would basically strip away our ability as a city to say no to those. Now we already have a couple digital billboards off the right-of-way, but I don't think we want to see billboards coming down the 15 freeway by Caltrans. And if Caltrans did this, then that takes away any authority for us to basically stop them. It also would limit the billboards outside the right-of-way. Somehow in their language they've managed to do that. So it's something that League of Cities is opposed to, they've asked us all to try and get letters in to oppose this, and it was a late cut in, like I said, and by Mullen. And just ask my buddy if we'd be okay opposing that, as the League has asked us to. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any opposed? There we go. All right, with that consent calendar, I do have the speed drum consent calendar, so go ahead and hear that first. Kenny Mace on item 1.8.
When this project started, the city engineer projected the cost to be $161,520. Lowest bid came in at $236,000. City staff commented that the community development block grant funds would cover all construction costs, up to $259,000. With the funding for design, environmental processing, right-of-way, contract administration, and inspection would be paid out of the DIF fees. We find that this isn't even enough. When does it all end?
Dan, do you have any comments on that, on that item, as far as the overruns and any like addresses?
Yes, we're working with the contractor now. There was a handful of disputed items of work that the contractor has brought forward. You know, those are the kinds of things that you can deny those claims and go through a legal proceeding, or try to find a way to negotiate a claim. That's one of the joys of doing public contract law, there's a lot of in favor of the public contractor, and it's a little bit more difficult for the public agency. We were working hard on that. I think as of this afternoon, we're pretty close to a final resolution for the final contract change order with them. Three of the items of work that was of challenge was the concrete monument sign, one was the power pedestal, and then there was a few other issues related to irrigation. We think we've got those close to resolution.
All right. Anyone else have anything they'd like to pull on the consent calendar or items?
Not pull.
Not pull, I just wanted to stay on the 1.10.
All right, with that, I'll take a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
Mayor, just item 1.10, there's an addition on the assignment assumption agreement.
Yes, sorry about that. So there's an agreement that's also on the dais, it's also on the back table. This was an item that was not attached to the agenda packet because it came in late. So that's attached now, and I hope everybody here got a chance to look at it. Any questions on that? Okay, I have a motion and a second on the consent calendar, right?
Is it the balance?
Oh, the balance, yeah. Well, I'll hold the consent calendar. And then with your abstention and with the addition of the item 1.10.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm carried with all ayes. Time to hold the public hearing, replace lanes on the parcels of unpaid tax charges. We're going to open the public hearing, and we will take the staff presentation first.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. We're asking that this item be continued until the July 11th, 2018 meeting for the public hearing. I know that there was a question that the gentleman had about that, and I would be glad to, if they would like to give me their contact information.
We'll give it to them.
Okay, I'd be glad to contact them, and get them in contact with either it's Waste Management or CRNR to resolve the issue on that.
Okay. And just so the gentleman knows, he's got everything you wrote down, is that everything? Go ahead and give that to him, Tim. Do we continue this item until next month?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had, what, a resident contacted me also, James, and so that they were able to pay the bill, I think just today. So I can just send you the email, and so, you know, she wanted to make sure she was off the list.
Sure, that'd be fine, then I can contact the hauler and tell them to make sure that that's off when we bring it back.
So I just want to recognize your concerns you brought up earlier. We do require all residential properties to have the two or three trash cans, depending on what service area you're in. And the purpose of that is, we've had in the past, lots of residential property owners that decided to do other things with their waste, up to including burying in the front yard, was one of Key's favorites. So we require that. It is just the way our laws are set up, so we don't have a house that doesn't have trash service, and so... And so, I recognize your struggle where you've got two neighbors and they're sharing a can. But we're going to work with James and see if there's anything else we can do. Sometimes there's either smaller cans they can go down to or other options. We'll see if we can find some other options that we can help out with, okay?
I totally agree with you, and we have pictures. We have a huge can.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and talk it over with James and we'll.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Anyone have any other comments on item 2.1? If not, I will continue this item open, the public hearing open. Do you need a motion or a sound because?
Yes.
All right, I'll take a motion to continue that.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries all ayes to continue that to next month. All right, on the Island'scape lighting district, 89-1, and the street light zone.
Yes, that's mine again. Mayor, council members, this is also part of our annual process to do a levy assessment for our lighting and landscaping maintenance districts. We have 31 locations throughout the city of Wildomar. The districts contained 11 separate landscaping zones and eight street lighting zones of benefit. And like I said, this is part of our annual process that we bring forth in order to continue to maintain those districts, the landscaping and the, the street lighting for them. As I said earlier, our consultant that helps us with that, Spicer, is here with us, and we're available to answer any questions.
Very good. I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any public comment cards on this. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Council comments? Any questions? Not hearing any. I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any opposed? So moved. That item carries all, all for it. I want a general business item, 3.1, the Brisland Family General Plan Initiation Proposal. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This item is a general plan initiation process. I just want to clarify that there is no formal decision being made on the request for a general plan amendment. This is like a study session where the applicant will, after my presentation, provide some feedback on their proposal. Council will take public input and then provide direction and comments to the applicant. So, just want to be clear that there is no proposed general plan amendment at this point. So, the applicant has submitted a pre-app as part of our GPI process. The residents would like to request a general plan amendment for three parcels totaling 16.82 acres. Specifically, the change would be from the existing land use of state density residential, which is two acre minimum lot sizes, to medium-high density, which is five-to-eight units to the acre. This map here shows the vicinity of where the property is. It's at the, basically at the north end of the city, on the east side of the 15 freeway. Lake Elsinore there is just to the north. You can see the, kind of, the odd shape of the lot. So, the MHDR 90s designation would allow between 84 and 134 for-sale condos or apartments based on the site size. The residents prefer to propose future townhomes or condominiums at this location, similar to the Vista del Lago project, which is just to the north in the city of Lake Elsinore. The formal project, if they decide to make that formal application in the future, would also require a zone change from RR3, tended to track map for condo purposes, and a plot line for the development of the site, including any sequel review. Could you move it back one for me, please? It's, has some exhibits of the existing land use. These exhibits will show the, the sites existing land use as well as, there we go. So, the GPA, as I mentioned, would be EDR to HDR. You can see the light area. That's all EDR along Grape Street there and the freeway. And to the back of that is the rural mountainous land use designation, which has the 10 acre minimum lot sizes. The zoning currently in the whole area is RR. So, if in the future they decide to come in, the request for that property site would be to RR3. So, the planning commission reviewed the GPI at its May 16th meeting. The commission was not supportive of the proposal, primarily due to density, density concerns and land use compatibility with the neighbors to the east and around that area. It had also raised concerns about an additional 84 to 134 units, condo units. And the commission pointed out the backlog of the 1,245 condos and apartments that the council's approved that hasn't been built. And so, you've seen this before. This shows you the, the four apartment projects that have been approved over the last several years that aren't being built yet, and then the approved townhome condo projects, four of them that haven't been built yet. Totally about 1,245 units. Up to 130 units would be added to that if this project were to go forward. So, this is kind of a preliminary site concept. This was done just to provide an example of what they're looking at. The lot, or I should say, the home arrangement is what it is because the site is such a weird configuration. This kind of shows a topographical layout. You can see how the topography would dictate how the units could be provided there. And then these are some very, very preliminary architectural elevations that they provided just as an example. We have not reviewed this or commented on any of this. We have no formal application to discuss. So, our recommendation is that the council receive public testimony from the applicant and the general public, discuss the land use and planning issues related to the proposed GPA, and then provide final feedback to the applicant, including possible alternative land use designation that could be supported. And that concludes my presentation. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
All right, we'll go ahead and take any speakers we have on this. And I have just one speaker, Gina Castman.
Mayor, I did, I did want to say that the applicant is here tonight as well.
Oh, actually, the applicant usually goes first. The applicant want to speak first?
Yes.
Sorry, Gina. Got it ahead of myself.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Patrick Bresson. I'm representing the family. We own this property. I became the owner of the property. Through foreclosure, we, we became the owner of the property. We never really wanted to be the owner of the property. We're not developers. We don't plan to be developers. But one thing we have, we, about three or four years ago, we reluctantly, like I said, became the member of the, owner of the property. And we've had it for sale ever since that point in time. And the, the feedback we get back from many developers is that they don't want to put, you know, estate property overlooking 15 freeway, just property, basically overlooks the 15 freeway. And what we would, what we had proposed doing was building some condos, or actually townhome, attached single-family residents, basically with garages and everything, similar to the Vista del Lago down the street, and make some affordable housing for this area. One thing that we have had problems with, speaking of what you folks were all talking about earlier today, we had a lot of problems with people dumping stuff at the site, and it's cost us quite a bit of money to haul two boats away. I think that was $1,400. And how they got there, I have no clue. I don't know. But, so, so keeping the site, you know, clean and everything is cost-effective money over the last four years, not to mention our, our initial investment we lost when the, when the investor, when the developer went bankrupt. And we became the proud owner. So, you know, we're, we're, we're losing at the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars on this property, basically, because no one wants to build an estate property overlooking the freeway. So, and I think it was probably a good idea at the time it was done, you know, the, the open space and all that. But there's no market for it right now. So, that, you know, what we're looking for is, is your help, essentially. Let us know what, if, if not the condos or if not the townhomes, what else, what else could go there, so we can market the property and get a professional developer to come and do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina, come on down.
Good evening. I was at the May Planning Commission meeting, and I spoke against the project for the same reasons the Planning Commission had concerns with all the books of the apartments that we have on the books not built out yet. And then our other problem, I feel, is that we don't have a general map plan, and we constantly do spot zone changes. The idea that, that the estate, no one wants to develop on that side of the freeway because it looks, looks over the freeway. For us who've been in the community for over, you know, 40 years, but even now, from our back porch, we can see homes on the west side, on the mountains, you know, beautiful, huge homes off Grand Avenue in Wildomar. Beautiful big homes are being built. So, these homes are being built in Wildomar. But, you know, those, those beautiful homes that are on the mountain side, they see the freeway, too. You know, that's just part of the view. So, the problem is that we have taken away so much of our rural residential, our equestrian zoning, that it's become smaller and smaller and smaller, to where that's really not, you know, part of the city anymore. And that's really, history makes the difference. And that's what we were, a rural agricultural town, and all of that's being taken away, bits by bits. So, I don't know, you guys are real big on moratoriums and bans. Why don't you put a ban on apartments for a while until we have our map done? Thank you.
Any other speakers? Oh, sorry, Ms. Miller, turn in the speakers, please.
A property owner that's reaching out to us to think of something to do with his property, rather than let it collect illegal dumping. This is a good thing, you know? I would love to see an orchard. The beautiful fruit that we need for, for sale, but that can lead to a large water bill. There must be grants and programs out there. U.S. Fish and Wildlife had the program to buy land. They had $4 million. Riverside County got it. It was in 2015. So, could buy it and just set it aside. We have to look for those programs, research. I knew it when I saw it. What's it doing in the business section of the agenda? That was a throw-off, but I said, look at those words. Those belong on a development project. So, we can think of some other things, other than structures which create heat, which creates ozone, which creates more problems for health. You get strokes and heart attacks, according to EPA, more and more in younger people. So, dying prematurely, and we might need their suggestions for something as interesting as this, a person who wants help with this property. So, and we don't need more condominiums and more people. We need to keep track of the people here and offer them places to live or receive services, or move to another area. So, I'm sure that the ban from San Bernardino is still dropping people off here. That's what Lake Elsinore says and experiences all the time. So, we don't need any of that. We need more suggestions. So, if I can think of some more, and I'm sure I will give it my best and ask for divine help to do with this particular property. So, I pray that people won't do illegal, illegal dumping there. And maybe we need to organize a group that does take care of green belts in front of Windsong. I mean, I've never heard of so much red tape in my life, as Mr. York said about just taking care of a green belt in the Windsong area. So, I'm willing to volunteer to pick up trash on a cool day like super in the morning. I'm not going past 8:00 anymore because of this heat. So, we'll keep thinking for you, sir, but no more condos. We've had enough.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the, what's not a public hearing. But, does the applicant want to rebut anything, or have you already sort of heard where you're coming from?
Yeah.
If you want, you go ahead and come to the microphone.
Mayor, council members. The one thing I would say, you know, when you're talking about the big homes up in Marion overlooking the freeway, they're also about 15 miles away from freeway. They're not, like, having the dirt from the freeway and the, and the noise from the freeway as well as just the view, so.
I have a quick question for you. Have you talked to the homeowners that are right behind you there?
Actually, there's one abandoned house behind us, and there's another one that's, that's there. We have, we have an agent that works down here.
Okay.
Ryan Jetson, and he, and he has any contact with them.
What were their feelings on the project?
Well, I don't know. I, I never got a feedback from them.
Are you part of the applicant, or?
Yeah.
The wife's got.
It's actually, my, my, my mother, she's in a body care, and, you know, she had the first trustee, and that's how her bills were even paid. Well, the original owners couldn't sell it either. So, that's, you know, we have it back. Again, we, you know, we're not developers. It has been listed. We've tried different prices. When you get the feedback from the same people that are interested initially saying, we're not going to build those here, what are, you know, what are we to do? I know there's a nationwide problem. People can't afford homes. I mean, that's not in Wildomar. That's nationwide. So, I, what I, what I've heard tonight is there's a very, this city's proud, and they're from homeowners. So, I'm thinking, why wouldn't you want more people being able to afford homes here? Anyhow.
More homeowners.
Well, yeah. We, we are trying. We've tried various ways for four years now. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, comments? I'll start with you, Richard.
So, actually, I had a question. You, you mentioned affordable housing. Did you want to go back? I'm sorry. Maybe I'll go way back. Were you already kind of thinking about price point, or are you thinking affordable's going to be lower rent, or what are you thinking?
Well, when we, when we think of affordable, we're from Orange County, so it's kind of tainted probably, but $250,000 to $300,000, in that range. We're looking at trying to find a way to, to have someone build. And we're not, we're not going to be the developer. They're going to have to come before you with their development plan. They're going to come here. There's going to be multiple points along the way, the sequel process and all that, for you to have input on what they're going to do. This is just the kind of one, one avenue of getting something out there. What we really want is some feedback from you all as to what you think you would support. That RR zoning, rural residential zoning, provides for a lot of different types of facilities to be built on that, in that, in that area, or types of venues, from, from nurseries to, to, like I mentioned last time, there was a spoke for me, mentioned something about a wrecking yard or something like that. Now, we're, we're looking at trying to do something that's similar to up, up the street a little ways. There's a really nice townhome development, Vista del Lago, and it's in very good shape. And that, and that's what attracted me to the situation, thinking to go with, with the idea of a townhome, because they are real single-family homes where people own title, too, and, and so on, and, and would have a strong holy homeowner association, and would keep the place nice, like the one down, really, 800 feet, 800 yards up the street. So, being in Lake Elsinore, Lake Elsinore's right, our property is right on the line, Lake Elsinore, just to the south of that. I mean, you got Walmart up the street. Now, they're also talked about, I think Caltrans has decided to put an off-ramp there, a new, a new style off-ramp. Mr. York may know more about that than I do, but, which would help with any traffic impacts at, at River Canyon Road. So, it seems like, it seems like a nexus is there to try to do something with that site as opposed to leave it, leaving it as a, you know, tumbleweed patch, which is pretty much what it is right now, other than somebody trying to do some dry boating.
I can certainly feel, yes, certainly feel your situation. You're definitely in a, a hard spot.
Right. Right.
But I'm not sure if this project is, is actually what we're looking for.
Right, no, well, I mean, you could take, I, I even thought about, I thought about that after talking to Matt and Mr. Bassi a few times. And if you took those pods, you showed, those are pods with six units on each one. If you took those and you called those single-family house, you'd have twenty-nine houses on that site. So, so that's something you could think about, too. Those might be awfully big houses, but maybe, maybe a little bit more, maybe thirty sites there that you could have, if you wanted to go the residential route and try to stay inside that line. The, the other opportunities are some commercial applications, you know, mini storage, and there's all sorts of concepts that could be done. But again, which direction you tell us to go is something that we may advertise to the, to the buyer, to whatever buyer is that becomes a developer to what they want to do. And they're going to have to come before you and show their plans and show what they're going to do.
So you're just getting it ready and then you're going to sell it?
Well, yeah.
It's a selling point, right?
Yeah, it's a selling point. Because right now, we can't sell. It's been saying for four years for sale. This is not going anywhere. So.
So, I like your idea better of single-family houses than apartment condos. You saw the slide that Matt presented, where we have a bunch of, of projects.
Right.
That are yet to be built. And once we, once those are done, I mean, that's a lot already, I think. So I, I don't see that type of project, really. I don't want to go down that road. I'd be more open and supportive of, I think, single-family houses. I was messing around with Google, looking at the, the satellite map to see where the house is, where I see the condominium, or the apartment slash condominium, you're talking about eight hundred yards of the road.
They have garage doors, they have garages and some picture.
My concern is, you know, the houses, there's one, about five houses off to the further east that, lotland there, building houses there. With the assumption that all of this right here would be estate-style houses, you know, so.
Well, yeah.
I, I, I always preach due diligence and, you know, they did those things, they did the due diligence, expecting, you know, the future to be a certain way. So, it's a hard decision, or I mean, it's, it's hard to give any kind of direction, but...
Well, one thing, one thing is that, you know, I believe we're going to be, we're going to be, in fact, I think that shows you there a little bit, the topo map, we'll be able to try to keep the, the vision, the view of the lake from being obstructed by any of the development we're doing. We would be doing it that side, or whoever would be doing it that side. And then also, basically, it would act as a sound buffer and a green belt, fully landscaped in a, a green belt for that Grape Street slash freeway complex from that. It may, may make their view, their view lines better, or at least more appealing. I mean, if you look at that other side of the street, it's, it's pretty, you, you can't miss it going down south on your freeway. It looks very nice. And I can't imagine that wouldn't possibly help their property value to be an estate property up above that.
Yeah, it'd be awfully close to this light, too, so. I mean, they have a nice house with the floor there. I mean, I, I don't know what the answer is.
Right.
I would be supportive of condos or condominiums, so.
But possibly single-family residents?
Yeah, it definitely takes, it would take me having to think through all the different ramifications, but my initial holdup is people built and bought, with the assumption X, Y, Z would be.
Because of general plans.
So, I, I'd have to really kind of think through and then talk to the people that own those, those houses and want to know their feedback, too, you know, so.
Yeah, one of, one of the things that has happened with those people that own the houses up there, they've cut an illegal street down through our property.
Yeah, I think I've seen that, yeah.
And, you know, we thought about trying to make that a legit street for them so they can have as part of the mitigation with regard to, you know, their offsetting their concerns about properties, to give them that other access down to Grape Street, which would be more, definitely safer than it is currently.
Yeah, they rent out a little lager or that little, dirt roads coming through your property.
Yeah, exactly.
Right to their house.
Right to their house.
Nice one, driveway, yeah.
In the wintertime, it's pretty treacherous, sometimes.
Comments?
Okay. Go ahead and take a seat. Unless someone else has any questions for the applicant, but I think we already have comments, so.
Comments for me? I, I don't think we need any more condos or apartments until the others get built. I think you'd be wasting your money to even pay for the change of zone when they're not building the other ones. They did get zone change, but they're not building them, they're sitting there. So the developers aren't jumping on buying those and building them out either, even though they're already approved. And I, I've been in real estate out here for forty-some years, so I understand your concern and wanting to get the property sold and out of here. I mean, you're in Orange County, you don't live here. Single-family residents I would look to. I would look to something commercial, possibly. Don't know how well it would do. Walmart is going to be moving from that location, my understanding. I don't know what it'll be going in. The Vons up there has closed, so even a small strip center with a market and things for people on that side of the freeway might be more interesting. But at this time, I couldn't support any kind of condos and/or apartments. And like I said, I think it's not going to add to the selling factor of the property because the people that have done this already haven't sold them. They're sitting on them.
General? Yeah. My personal opinion is it's two-and-a-half acre lots right now, and the general plan is that way. It would be a very expensive situation to change the general plan to accommodate something like that. Plus, like, like we all already understand, we have tons of apartments on the books and nobody's building anything because the market's just not there. And I get where you guys are at with the property. My concern, the biggest concern is going to be the neighbors that bought their two-and-a-half acres. I live on two-and-a-half acres, and if somebody came in front of me and said they were going to build something like that in front of my house, I'd sue them. So that would be the first thing that would happen, unless the city went ahead and changed the plan. I'm for property rights guy. I agree with you guys. I, you're in a hard spot with the piece of property that you have. Really, the only thing that you're going to be able to do there right now is two-and-a-half acre parcels. I mean, but who wants to build a house in this area? Nobody. Even the builders don't want to build houses unless they can get fifty-five or three-hundred because there's just no market in there. And the water to bring to that location is outrageous and the sewer's outrageous. So, there's no real answer for you guys at this point because I don't think the market, I know the market's not there for that because it's just an oddball spot, but when I looked on the map and I saw houses around it and behind it, then I knew, you can't do that to the people that already live there. You're better off just trying to market it in. I mean, I don't even know else what you can do with it. Honestly, commercial, I don't see it because the, the market already closed. Walmart's going to be going out of there, and it's going to be a big blithe right there. And I do like the ones next door to you. I like the apartments. They have their place and they worked out in a good spot, but they weren't, they didn't have the people behind them either. So it kind of worked out for Lake Elsinore to put them there, and they actually created people to go to that shopping center. So at this point, I'm not in favor of any of that stuff because it's already two-and-a-half acres and I'm not, I'm not interested in changing the, the map. I had a personal friend of mine that tried to do the same thing in Wildemar, and I told him, we can't do it. And he's my friend and he has a lot of money, and I told him, sorry, it's just the way it goes because it's listed as two-and-a-half acres and that's what it's going to stay. And I told him, and he walked away and bought something in Murrieta, which is fine, and he understood my position. But I still represent everybody in the city, even though I'm in a district. This is still my city, and I've been here since seventy-nine, so. And I've watched that area up there, and I've always wondered why people built on the side of that hill when you have a freeway, but it does have awesome views.
You've got an awesome lake view.
Yeah, you've got an awesome lake view. And I mean, if I had money, I'd probably buy, build a house up there myself because it is a cool view. But so, for something like that, no. And even the housing, I don't see it. I don't see the market would bear a house, you know, twenty-nine or thirty houses up there. I just don't know any builder that would do that. And I've been doing this a long time, and I know a lot of builders, and I think they would be afraid of that because of the water alone and sewer would kill them. It would just wipe out the price of the, the housing, so. I can't, I mean, that's my personal opinion.
So I, I think you've heard from my colleagues, and I pretty much feel the same way. Tim talked about districts. This does happen to be my district. I know that because when I was looking for a house last summer, I looked at that house, the one, the one you think that's abandoned or was for sale for a little while, then it looks like it's kind of abandoned. But, and if I had bought there, I would really probably not be in favor of something right in front of me like this. So I, I think that's the biggest thing. You know, if you came back in here, you told us you've got all five of those neighbors there are all, you know, they all want this and you, whatever, I, I think maybe we'd have a chance. But again, I, I really have a tough time when I look at our general plan and recognize that, that whole area that we want to try and keep, you know, moving forward with rural residential feel up there. That's what we want. And that's something that's been on our, our general plan map for years. And I recognize you guys didn't buy this with the intent. It was more of a, you guys, or Grandma was holding the, holding the paper when the, when the, the deal fell apart. And I, I'm sorry to hear that, but again, it's, it's tough for any of us to see a general plan change in that area when we've been looking at that for so long, and especially when there are five houses right in that area. So I think any one of them would probably not be in favor of this, but I could be wrong. Maybe all five of them want is to see development because they all want water. You know, sometimes that, that's how that works out, but, so I, I really don't see any, you know, movement forward again. Maybe the single-family house is like some of us have talked about, but I think you'd have a really tough time marketing that, and really, when you find out what the water connection fees and the sewer, if you're going to be to get the water and sewer there, I don't think even twenty-nine homes would work. I don't know if, I don't know if even a hundred homes in there would work. It's just really a tough, tough hill to climb, literally. So, we all feel for you, and, you know, I wish we could say something different, but at this point, I don't feel any movement to move anything else either. But this is not a denial. This is, Marcia's going to read the, our regular ordinance, but, you know, we just want to give you all the heads up we can, but we're not denying it. We're just saying, hey, we got lots of concerns.
And I will move that the applicant may initiate and proceed as proposed general plan, the proposed general plan amendment, if the applicant so chooses, but the applicant should be fully aware of the concerns expressed by the council at tonight's meeting.
I'll second that. Any opposed? So moved. All right. All right, we'll move on to item three point two, the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget amendments. Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. James will start off the presentation this evening. James.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Mayor, members of the council. As Gary said, we're going to do a tag team. I'm first up, and Alfredo will be doing the guiding on the PowerPoint because I don't have the skills that Mr. Bassi has. We can go to the next one, Alfredo. Okay. In June, last June twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen, we passed a biannual budget for both fiscal year twenty-seventeen, eighteen, and for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. Since that time, there's been a number of things that have happened. One of the biggest, of course, is us receiving our, well, receiving vehicle license fee replacement. I mean, we did not get our twelve million dollars that we were due for the six years. We didn't have it. But going forward, we, we did receive our money. So, we have received our money, and we have actually received it physically in hand. And so, what we're proposing are some amendments to the twenty-eighteen, nineteen base budget that we approved last June. The first one is related primarily to, with our revenues, is related to a two-point-four million dollar increase related to the vehicle license fee replacement because it was not originally budgeted, and so we want to add that to our budget. And then there's a couple of little minor decreases with property tax and some deferral related to a transfer related to some monies in that we, we would receive on some non-general funds. Also, on our general fund expenditure side, we have a net increase. Two million of that is to increase our police services, basically back to what they used to be before the money got taken away by the state. So that's increasing thirty hours up to seventy patrol hours per day. And so, that's a seventy-five percent increase, bringing us back to those twenty-eleven service levels. And so Chief Dan, we are looking forward, well, I think he's already implemented some of that from our mid-year, so we're, we're really glad to have that happen. And then we have some minor, other minor changes. Our fire station is getting some much-needed maintenance done, and so, well, actually remodeled, done to our, our kitchen, and so we're moving some money over to, to that project. And then we have some other increases in our general government-related services, and we have an increase also in some community development, related funds related to planning and a planning commission. To continue on, we also have some non-general, general fund, general fund items, revenue items that we need to increase, primarily related to SB one, the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, also known as RMRA, also known as the new gas tax. There's various names for it. And so we want to increase our revenues for that. On the flip side of that, we are decreasing some of our expenditures. The big four mil, big four million of that is related to some grant projects that we're still planning to do, but we're not going to spend all that money in eighteen, nineteen. So we're going to be spending it in the future, and that's offset by some projects related to gas tax, Measure A, and the RMRA projects that relate to that, that new, that SB one new gas tax. However, we, I think, I know most councils are aware that there is a repeal process that's going to be on the ballot in November eighteenth, that could possibly repeal the, the new gas tax. And so, our Assistant City Manager, Dan York, took that into consideration and working on his budget. And so if that is repealed, then fifty percent of the funds for road maintenance and projects will be eliminated. Final recommended adjustments are related to carrying forward some budget expenditures from twenty-seventeen, eighteen, for various projects to fiscal year twenty-eighteen, nineteen. And most of the reason that we're carrying this forward is because we did these mid-year, big mid-year adjustments once we got the funding related to the motor vehicle license fee replacement. We haven't had time to spend that money yet for, for these projects that were approved. So we're moving those things over. There's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand related to general fund expenditures, and there's about a hundred-and-seventy thousand related to non-general fund expenditures. And then the last item is there's five decision package proposals that are also included with this budget that we want the council to look at and to make decision on. We can go on to the next, Alfredo? Thank you. I know this one is very hard to see, but it is in your packet. I think the main point we wanted to show from this is that our estimated available fund balance, even after these changes are put into effect at June thirtieth, twenty-nineteen, we're estimating our reserve to be almost two million dollars, which is fifteen percent of the amended appropriations that we're asking about. Next, please. I won't even try to describe that, but that shares both the general fund change and the non-general fund change by individual specific project. And then, we can go to the next one, Alfredo? Thank you. And then this gives you a detail of the proposed carryforward amounts that we want to move forward. Just to point out a few of the items, I know it's very hard to see that. Some is related to speed zone repair, a speed zone study that was, you know, approved. There's some shade structures that we want to do at the parks. There's the kitchen remodel that I mentioned for Fire Station sixty-one, and there's also the sixty thousand for the video recording system that Gary mentioned earlier that we'll be bringing back to council probably in September. With that, I will turn things over to Gary.
Thank you, James. James mentioned that, well, it's nice to have some carryover concepts in a budget, being that we had, you had approved those items last February fourteenth. Steph has not had time to accommodate all that workload. So those items will be carried forward from this fiscal year into next fiscal year. So there's no real decision upon that, but it just brought to your attention that those things will be coming forward next year also. While the shade tarps out, shade structures out of the parks, the project has not been canceled, it's just taken us a while to get that implemented. So in addition to that, we do have some decision items for you. And these are coming to you in the ways of decision packages. We have four of them relating to the general fund and one that relates to the cemetery. And we'll discuss that one in the cemetery's business section. The first item that we have on the decision package is the commercial design guidelines. And that's to help with Matt Bassi's planning area. To come up with guidelines, when commercial activity comes in, we can give them some instructions of the kind of structures we would like to see them provide here in the community. Right now, it's pretty much open. And it's caused us a lot of concern because we're trying, we want to raise the standard of the type of development that comes in here. So these will definitely help with that. And it would save development community funds also, because they wouldn't have to go back and redo things. We're going to try and guess what type of structures and designs are appropriate for the community. So that's about a $30,000 project to get that completed. Secondly, we have the fire marshal services from the fire department. Long talk about, it's long been talked about, having a local fire marshal presence here. Also having a plant check for fire, for construction projects, the plant check for the fire activities, for the fire concerns here locally, so the developers, the builders don't have to drive downtown. They could draw up the plants here, pick them up here, discuss the issues locally with the fire department inspectors and plant checkers. Also, eventually working this into a weed abatement program and helping out with non-weed abatement, but with the life and safety issues with business inspections. We have a number of businesses that, typically, you experience an annual inspection of your business to make sure it's conformed and is safe for the community and the public to enjoy your services. So that item, the proposed amount on that is a net $69,500. And that's because we would be implementing, as we phase this in over the next year, it would be fully functional about a year from now. But as we phased it in, we would also be phasing in fees that would help pay for the cost of those services. So pretty much, the idea is that it would ultimately be a, there'd be no cost impact associated with that service by the time this is fully up and running. And that's the goal that we'd be struggling for, is to make it that type of a cost neutral impact to the community. So that's the second item. Third item, animal control, the field services. They've been providing us with five hours of service a day, five days a week. They drive around in vans and tend to the animal control issues of the community. I know we've had buffalo running down the street. I remember when Frank, the city manager, raced a goat down Palomar. We had the cow incident on Buddy Canyon. That was unfortunate. But a number of, you know, issues in the community. And they've, since we had the motor vehicle license fee revenues pulled from us by the state back in 2011, the animal control services partnered with us and reducing their expenditures. And, you know, we did the service levels. So we're looking, they've asked to bring their service levels back up and bring them to eight hours a day instead of the five hours they're currently at. The cost impact on an annual basis is $16,800, very reasonable amounts, about $7,000 a month in total versus the $5,600 a month we're currently paying them. Fourth and final item for the general fund is the addition of a position for administrative analyst position in the finance department. As you know, we're losing Terry. She's already left.
Maggie's dropped.
Got her orders and she's gone. We will be losing Terry. We do have some contractual help in the shop that has been here a while. They will be sharing duties with that. We're also looking at expanding our city staff, by bringing on an administrative analyst position to work strictly in the finance department and maintain the continuity. So when we do have turnover, or if a consultant is to leave, we have staff, city staff, that can pick that up and start growing the organization with some more junior people. So that, the annual cost on that's $77,000. So in total, about $193,300 for the general fund initially. On the recurring side, it's about $93,000 for the general fund on a recurring basis. So those are the decision packages. We have an opportunity in a few months to go through those in detail. The following page, we have the approved, the schedule of positions that are included in the budget. And these do not include any additions that are being asked through decision packages. This merely lists all positions, their budgets, and their anticipated and estimated cost per position, full-time and part-time positions. And we include this in all our budget packages. The next slide is basically a summary. I mean, what we're looking at is we have been fortunate to get our motor vehicle license fee replacement funds returned. That's about $2.4 million of new revenue, of which about $2 million is gone to bring our police levels back up to the 2011 service levels. This is 2018. However, we lost over $12.5 million over those five and a half, six years, those funds. That's monies we don't anticipate ever getting back. And that's loss of services. That's a loss of improvements to our transportation system, our streets, those community efforts about wanting to create dirt roads. I mean, the funds just aren't there to do that. Going forward with the new funds, while we're back up to the 2011 service levels, that's still not, those service levels could be enhanced. And it would be right for this community to look into doing those types of increases for public services. As you know, we had the survey that was conducted last December. And we've got substantial support from the community of that survey that would support an increase of, would support funding for public services level increases and road improvements and other public safety issues that could be addressed in this community. You heard the outcry or the speaking tonight, a number of those folks addressing the homeless issues. And this is something that, you know, it's been pushed down from the state, issues to the county, to us. And we're the last stop on that list. And finding funding sources and utilizing our services with our sheriff's department to address it, like some of the other communities have, have been very proactive. That just takes a lot of funds to do that. And we have funds for 2011 service levels. We don't have funds to address these 2018 issues. So we'll, so staff will continue to look forward and continue to do the research to find funding sources and to work with the community public service groups about addressing some of these items. And we'll be bringing back, to use some recommendations in July, about what could be some possible alternatives to amending this budget, which actually is a good, solid budget. I mean, we have a nice reserve in here. It's balanced. It's just, you know, we're back to the 2011 ones, which is better than where we were in 2014. But I mean, it's not getting ahead. And we need to take those steps, raise the awareness of the community, and put the money into public service, public safety, and public infrastructure, streets. So that's what's in the budget. That's what staff is looking forward to, bringing you in the future. And points of discussion is the budget that you approved last June, plus these amendments that we're bringing forward to you today. And any discussion you'd like to have on the decision packages, we can go through those individually and see what we can afford to do at this time. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you.
My question is on number four.
Before we go to the decision package, since this slide is, just a second, Marsha. On this going forward, Gary, what I'm concerned about is we're going to go to the public for a sales tax increase. Because I want to be very certain that this is going to be spent on police, fire, code enforcement, homeless, and roads. And I think those are things that we can spend all those dollars on very easily. And I want to make sure that it's going to those particular things. And I also want to talk about what our admin fees are going to be overall for those.
And you also want to mention about the school safety program too, with the possible sharing of an SRO with a city like Els.
I think that would fit into the police part.
Yes.
Yeah. But I just want to be certain that we're putting forward something that everyone understands. It's for those particular items, and that we're going to make sure our admin fee's not 25% right, Dan. So that's something I just want us to focus on as you're bringing forward those options in next month, is to make sure we're locking this down for those things as best we can, and that we're talking about what our admin fees are going to be in those different categories. Or at least an overall admin fee, what that number would be.
Will we bring in forward to you some spending guidelines about how much of this would go to public safety, how much would go to public infrastructure?
Right.
How much would go towards economic development, creating jobs in the community? Those types of.
That starts to get outside of police, fire, roads, and code enforcement, in my mind, but let's.
Well, we probably have zero on that capacity then.
Yeah.
But we would be bringing to you those spending guidelines, and we would, that would be the deal.
Right.
I mean, if this funding measure goes forward, here's how the funds will be spent.
I just want to make sure we're clear on that. We're going forward to the community. We're focused on those things.
Yeah.
Marsha.
Well, my question on number four with Terry leaving, we're moving someone from that position, in her group, to her position, and this is an extra position? This is not to replace her?
That's correct. This would be.
I just want to make sure I understood.
Yes, we're out to advertisement right now for an accounting manager. And we encourage all to apply through the end of the month. Is that right, James? It's open to the end of the month?
That is correct, to June 28th.
So if you have experience in accounting, government finance, we encourage you to apply. Look forward to that. In the interim, we have an existing consultant who's been with us for about a year now. And she will be covering, doing those payroll services and accounting, general vouchers.
This is completely separate and added to the person?
Junior position.
Yeah, but the concern is when she leaves, or when that person is to leave, who is there to back them up? And that's, we're trying to build, you know, city staff that will be, that will have the institutional memory about things can be done here at the city.
Perfect.
Other questions, anyone? I don't have any public comment cards on this. We'll go through that. And then I'm looking for some opinions on the decision packets. If you want to put that up on the screen, the decision package over here, there's a backup for the slides.
So a question on number one, the commercial design guidelines. I know Marsha brought a few months ago maybe about the parking. Would this be somewhat included in that, that we wanted to increase the parking spaces?
Councilmember Moore, no, that would not. These are architectural design guidelines only. That's a whole different avenue when you get into parking standards.
Because I still wanted to do that also.
This would address some, yeah, see, this would address several issues that we had with one of the other projects. When people come and propose things on plenty of key, our miracle lot, there's a certain standard that we envision them bringing to us. And it's not happening. And we don't have something to point at to say, this is what we want, and this is what the community supports.
If I could just add to that, Gary. The design review process, when you don't have design guidelines, is like a negotiation. It's like buying a used car, buying a new car. You go back and forth. But I don't have anything to stand on that says, here are the standards, here are the guidelines. At least you got to start from here. And then we try to even get better. Now it's just, well, you know, try to get the best that you can with just negotiating. So this would really help in terms of future commercial projects, where we would be able to stand firm on specific standards. Part of the scope of what we have will involve three public, community workshops with the commission and the public. And then the preparation of the actual design guidelines and going back to planning commission and council for approval. So you'll have an opportunity to take a look at what we're proposing, make changes. But that's pretty much what we're looking for on that.
This would have helped with the storage place. You would have had a little more input. I'm for that.
It would. The retail center that was just approved. In fact, I'd be happy to say that we negotiated pretty well on that. The commission and council approved the condition that has to go back to planning commission. Commissioner Langworthy and Commissioner Strong met with myself and Alfredo and the applicant, and we banged out some, I think, some really good design for that project. It's going to look radically different than what was, you know, not approved per se, the innovation part. So those are the kinds of things, though, that we could have that upfront.
Right.
And we wouldn't have to gone through the exercise that we did.
I think our planner and our planning department knows what we want, but we haven't given them a backbone to be able to stand on, to say, these are the standards, and this is what you have to live up to. I know you try real hard to get them there, and you can't make them without these standards. You can't.
Well, I looked at all four of these options and think, gosh, we needed all these for a while. When I looked at the fire marshal, I remember when Harv Dagster was trying to build a garage in his house. The fourth or fifth time he was coming back from the county, the phone calls I get from him, not pleasant. But, you know, I experienced that myself developing in this area when it was still county. The fire marshal desk is a long ways off, and it's not easy. And it's difficult to get all the way to the planning department and find out, well, a fire marshal wants you to put in a fire hire. Wait a minute. So it's really something we've needed here for a long time. I think the really good part is the reoccurring number. If we can really actually hit that number with our fees, and that's the point of supporting that, that's great. And then we look at animal control. I remember when I was talking to them, when I was first deciding on for council, and they wanted to up their hours back then. It's been a long time coming. So glad to see we're finally moving their numbers up as well. The administrative assistant package, I think that's something we need too. So I look at all four of these as something I think they're all needs, you know. And you got to spend what your needs, and I see all these as being there. Well, the fifth one, we'll talk about in the cemetery district meeting. Sorry, I goofed up on the slide there. If anyone agrees with that, I take a motion.
So moved.
All right. I'm actually going to ask for a motion. The next three items, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5, are all related to this budget. And they're all, if we were going to take on all these items. So hearing that we have support for all four of those items, I could actually take a motion on 3.2 through 3.5, unless someone has a question on any one of those items.
Is there any public comment on?
I have no other public comment cards.
Well, I didn't, Philip, can I ask a question? But it was on the one that you just passed, though, but it's related to the.
Yeah, which one?
The, the one that you just.
3.2?
Yeah.
We just passed that one. Is it related to 3.3, 4, or 5?
I don't think 3.5 has the same as the other.
Yeah, because that one's there before the, that's part of, that's the agreement that goes with the fire marshal. But if you have a comment on 3.5, sure, we can take that comment. You're good?
Well, 3.5 is a wildland fire protection. It's not the same thing as 3.4 or 3.3.
Gary, wasn't that part of the contract for the?
It's a separate contract. It is included in the budget. It's the wildland fire insurance program that pays in the event that we have a major fire out in the canyon area, the wildland area, wildland areas.
Right.
The wildfire, and we need the bulldozers and the airplanes and all that stuff. Instead of us having to pay for it, it's covered under this insurance program.
It's part of the budget package.
Yeah, it's part of the budget package, but it's not part of that $69,000, right?
No, it's part of the original. It's part of the actual base budget.
So really, three, okay, I got you.
It's part of the base budget.
I want to check with Tom earlier. Say we can take a motion on all four, if anyone was okay with that. Unless someone has a question.
If you have a question on the wildfire, yeah.
No, I don't have a question.
Okay. I'll look for a motion.
I will amend my motion to include 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5. A little approval.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I'd have moves with everyone in favor. That I had moves with everyone in favor. All right, Gary already did your city manager report. Did you miss anything?
No, we're good.
And future agenda items, anyone?
Yes. One more thing, Gary, I'd like to see is an ordinance, I know we tried this ones before, but this time get maybe through the barriers that we had to allow craft fairs or farmers' markets type events here in Wildmore.
A future intent item.
Okay. Very good. We'll take a look at that. Anyone else? All right. With that, I'll adjourn the city council meeting.